It is Monday afternoon in downtown Charlottesville, Virginia. Thank you kindly for joining us on the talk show. Today's show, like all our shows, a dynamic experience for you, the viewer and listener, where you can shape what we talk about by putting your comments in the feeds of wherever you're watching the show upon. So if you want us to talk about a topic, ask us a question. If you want us to head in a direction on a topic we're talking about, shape the discussion by giving your thoughts on social media, wherever you're watching the show, and our proprietary software aggregates your perspective and I relay it live on air. We highlight the Blue Ridge Venture Fund. You can find the Blue Ridge Venture Fund online at bluerridgeventurefund.com. As our presenting partner, the Blue Ridge Venture Fund connects individuals and entities that are looking to fund or capitalize businesses in central Virginia and beyond and help them grow. We connect experts and thought leaders in their fields with capital and small businesses with money needed to grow. BlueridgeVentureFund.com. Judah Wickhauer is our director. I want to touch on tomorrow and then we'll weave you into the mix. I think our perspective is very complimentary. We look at things, you know, through different lenses, just like anybody would, like any humans. Tomorrow, the public hearing on the draft zoning ordinance, the DZO. We are, if I use a baseball analogy, I would not say we're in the bottom of the ninth inning, but we're pretty darn close. I'd say we're in the top of the ninth inning. And tomorrow's public comment period, public hearing, is going to be, I would imagine, extremely well-attended, engaged with folks on both sides of the draft zoning ordinance fence. It is no secret that upzoning at this point is... How would I characterize this? Hot topic, divisive, a lightning rod, a point of concern, a topic that's galvanized much of this community. Here it is in a nutshell. Folks in positions of authority believe that if additional supply is created in Charlottesville's limited housing ecosystem, then the additional units and the added supply will breed affordability from a simple supply and demand theory. If you increase the supply, then you potentially will depress or maintain or stabilize prices. Folks have said otherwise, that if you increase the supply, it's just going to add to increased speculation, and increased speculation is going to yield units that are expensive and have high asking prices. No one has a legitimate answer. No one has an actual answer because we can't see into the future. We don't have a crystal ball. If you've watched this program long enough, you realize that I think upzoning and the draft zoning ordinance is going to do very little from an affordability standpoint in Charlottesville, Virginia. If you watch this program long enough, you realize or you've heard me say that the draft zoning ordinance and upzoning is just going to create more housing speculation, more entrepreneurs and businessmen and women getting into the game, driving up the cost of acquisition. And as the cost of acquisition is driven up, because what they're buying has more opportunity to be subdivided, or more opportunity to generate rents or increase rent rolls, those folks that are acquiring or buying the land, or acquiring or buying a house to knock it down, or to expand it, or add additional apartments, are going to say, you know what? I want more money for these additional apartments. I'm not going to look at this through a lens of affordability. I paid a boatload of money to acquire this land, or I paid a boatload of money to acquire this house to be able to build these ADUs in the backyard, or to knock it down and build a triplex or a quadplex. So as I'm finally coming to market, I want a lot of money from a monthly rent standpoint. That's what I think is going to happen. And that's a very simplistic way of looking at it, but it's a straightforward and honest way of looking at it, at least from my lens and my perspective. Tomorrow, we're going to see the community engage in ways that I don't think this city has seen before. I think folks that are following upzoning are extremely well-read and extremely sophisticated and extremely, you know, dotting the i's and crossing the t's from their viewer, from their unique perspective. And of course, this is something that's going to intrigue people. This is housing. This is density. This is their neighborhoods, where they live. And some folks feel threatened that upzoning and additional housing will impact quality of life, and it very well may could. And how could it impact quality of life? Well, if you have a quad, or a tri, or a duplex next to you, then you're going to have more people as your neighbor, and you could have more traffic and more congestion. So Michael Guthrie pointed out on Real Talk this morning, if you have a quad, or a tri, or a duplex next to you, it's going to impact the assessed values of your homes, because if you have a piece of property that's adjacent to yours, and that property is more valuable because of what's constructed on that land, that's going to trickle over to your assessed value as well, meaning you're going to pay more taxes on it. Tomorrow, you'll see this in action. I am excited to watch local government in the works. I would not want to be city council. I do think that council is nearing a vote. Keith Smith and I have a bet on this, on whether the vote will happen in 2023 or not. There's two meetings following this public comment tomorrow. There's two other city council meetings where they can vote on approving the draft zoning ordinance. Regardless, we are in the top of the ninth inning, and we are heading to a finish line. Want to weave you in the mix, Judah Wickhauer. You've highlighted on the show in the past that this is something that you've recently started following, and we talked about it enough, right? That it's, you know, top of mind. I've been impressed with you, of how you've adapted to the commentary that's outside your box or your topic matter of interest, and really become well-versed in it. This is about to be potentially something we put behind us, upzoning. I'm curious in that brain of yours, what you're going to be following in the public comment tomorrow, and the impact that you think upzoning, a variation of this is going to be approved, of the impact it's going to have locally in this community.
Well, I think my biggest question is, if not this, then what? Is there another option? If you believe that this is, you know, going to go south, and that it's going to cause excessive speculation in the housing market, then is there an answer for Charlottesville? I mean, what other option is there if not finding some way to expand the area of available buildings?
Great question. I have a couple of ideas. One of the ideas is going vertically.
Yeah. Isn't that part of what they're talking about, though?
This is less about verticality and more about zoning flexibility. Now, part of zoning flexibility could include verticality, but this is more about loosening zoning rules and ordinances to allow a property owner to be potentially creative with what they want to do with the land that they own. An alternative option would be Almaro County's 5% developmental area and expanding that, because anyone that watches this program, you, me, we all know this, the line between Charlottesville and Almaro, no one really knows where that is. And right now, Almaro County has said, look, we have this massive county. I mean, we talked about this a couple of weeks ago. Let me get the exact dimensions of Almaro County.
Yeah, Charlottesville is kind of a tiny little dot in the sea of Almaro County.
Right, 10.2 square miles for Charlottesville. Almaro County is 762 square miles. 762, excuse me, 726, I'm looking at it right now online. 726 square miles for Almaro. 10.2 for Charlottesville. I mean, what you call it, a dot? It's like a fish, like a school of fish in an ocean that is Almaro. Smallest island possible in the sea that is Almaro. I mean, Almaro's not going to go for that. There's no voting, there's no political capital or political equity to expand the Almaro County developmental area. Diana McKeel's come on this show, and she said, why would we expand the developmental area when the 5% isn't at its capacity? Donna Price has come on this show. She has said the same thing. Now, Michael Pruitt, the board supervisor candidate that's going to be the representative of the Scottsville district, he's all for expanding the developmental area. Michael Pruitt is. Problem is, it takes four of six supervisors to expand it. And Galloway's not going to do it. Mallett's not going to do it. Lepisto Curtley's not going to do it. McKeel's not going to do it. Jim Andrews is not going to do it. I would bet that Supervisor Pruitt is going to find himself, when it comes to housing, on the side of 5.1 or 4.2 votes quite often. Because voters in Almaro are electing people into office that want to keep Almaro rural. And they want to keep the 726 miles land and countryside and rolling hills and mountains and green as opposed to concrete jungles. And that's why folks move to Keswick. That's why folks are living in the 20 to Scottsville area. And I'll talk about 20 to Scottsville in a matter of moments. My family and I went to Foxfire Christmas Tree Farm yesterday to do our family tradition of cutting down a Christmas tree. We'll get to that in a matter of moments. But before we get off this topic, do you see any likelihood of the DZO or of upzoning creating any affordability whatsoever?
Yeah, I think to some extent, if there are more houses, it will make, you know, the availability of more housing will bring prices, I don't know that it'll bring prices down an appreciable amount, but hopefully it will. I'd like to see it at least stem the tide, so to speak, of prices just going up and up. I don't know that that's the only thing that's going to do it. I think things like getting more housing, like this Ivy Road.
The tower by the Lewis Mountain Neighborhood? We'll have representatives of the Lewis Mountain Neighborhood Association on the program in about a week from Wednesday, right?
I think it's this Wednesday.
Oh, this Wednesday is Ginny Hu, JDubs, as you've put on the calendar. And a week from this Wednesday is Hillary Lewis of the Lewis Mountain Neighborhood Association to talk about that apartment tower at the footprint of the Truist Bank Building.
Yeah, gotcha. For some reason, I don't know why, I had the two mixed up. Yeah, I think obviously we need more housing, whether it's houses or apartments or what have you. If you can't build, then everything becomes more of an expensive...
But if you make the dirt more opportunistic, it's going to have the same effect. Sarah Wise, I believe this is a first-time commenter, Sarah Wise. Sarah, have you commented on the program before? I appreciate your comment. I'm about to respond to it. Then we'll get to Deep Throat, Vanessa Parkill, Grayson Thomas watching the program. We'll get to all these comments that are coming in. I will mention this live on air. This is what Sarah says. Sarah, this is not a bad idea. Sarah says, what do you think about UVA switching second years to being required to live on grounds? The impact this will do for the housing situation? This starts with next year's class, graduating class of 2028. My son is a first year. The clamoring for housing started in early September. Without these 4,000 kids in the housing market, that's significant. Sarah, it's a good comment from you. Is this your first time commenting on the program? If so, we appreciate your comments. I'm also going to send you a friend request right here, Sarah, on Facebook. I lived, I went to UVA. I lived on grounds my second year in Lambeth Commons, 456-4. That is right off Rugby Road. We found the experience of living in Lambeth Commons fantastic, because we were close to the fraternities, close to the parties, and within walking distance, a short walk of our classes. I am all for the University of Virginia taking a more significant seat at the table when it comes to housing. I think the University of Virginia should take a seat at the table when it comes to housing. I've been a huge proponent of the University of Virginia and the Payment in Lou of Taxes Program. They should be paying taxes on some of their houses, some of the property they own, and if they're not paying taxes, they should be allocating a lump sum every year to Charlottesville City and Almaro County. UVA is going to fight that tooth and nail. We know that. I think the University of Virginia, if it does take a larger seat at the table, for example, requiring second years to live on grounds, that's going to open up additional bedrooms and additional doorways and additional rooftops for locals. But you also have to remember, the University of Virginia is expanding in many ways. So while it's asking second years to live on grounds, it's still going to add more students to the ecosystem with data science, the Paul Manning Biotech Institute. And a couple of weeks ago, we said on the talk show, the applying first years, the first years that are trying to get in early to UVA, these are students that are in high school that are applying early admission or early action to UVA. It's at an all-time high. The University of Virginia has more applications for early admission or early action than ever before. And to put that number in perspective, it's basically the population of the city of Charlottesville, the amount of first years that are applying to UVA. Think about that. That puts things in perspective. The amount of students applying to go to UVA, high schoolers right now, it's basically the population of Charlottesville. Sarah Wise says, yes, I'm a first-time commenter, Jerry. I love your show. I listen usually on the podcast while walking the dogs, but I'm tuning in live today. Well, thank you, Sarah, and welcome to the family. We're grateful for you watching and listening to the show. This is from Deep Throat, then we'll get to Ginny Hu. Deep Throat says, there is a saying in the commodity markets, the cure for high prices is high prices. Charlottesville produces a lot for the small gap that exists between sales price and production cost of housing. If prices keep increasing, that wedge will increase, and we will see more building. Zoning is not the barrier. Look at what is in the pipeline just in recent months. 500 units at Verve, 250 at RMD's project, 150 units at 1709 Jefferson Park Avenue. Deep Throat says, we have 1,000 or more lots with entitlement for more than a single-family house that have nothing but a single-family house on the lot. We have a number of brownfield commercial spots that can host a lot of housing. Great Eastern still is working on a project on part of Seminole Square for 450 apartments. Buy right, current zoning, when the profitability is there, the units will be too. In regards to UVA, unfortunately, UVA, Deep Throat says, is making room for the second years in part by kicking out upperclassmen from certain beds. UVA just not adding beds at the rate they need to, period. Getting them to add more and not increasing the enrollment would be the number-one thing that would help housing situation. Right, so kind of echoing what I'm saying there. There's, I don't want to call it a smoke and mirrors game, because I hope there's good intention, but saying the second years have to live on grounds, but expanding the amount of undergraduates and graduate students on the school, it counterbalances the second years requiring to live on grounds. Does that make sense?
Yeah. They're going to pull back in one area, expand in another, and the overall effect is going to be little change or change in the wrong direction.
Right, right. So we'll see tomorrow. We'll follow it closely. The rubber's meeting the road. The rubber is meeting the road. I would imagine you'll see, once this is approved in some capacity, even more covenants and restrictions on housing, where people basically are forming mini HOAs or putting covenants and restrictions on the properties they own to keep them from being subdivided and developed. Ginny Hu said she lived on grounds her second year, and Gooch Dillard, I had a, we had a fantastic experience living on grounds. She also highlights Foxfire Christmas Tree Farm, where my family went to cut our Christmas tree yesterday, and said, I've been getting a tree from Foxfire since I was a toddler, almost the whole time I've been alive. In fact, my wedding photo hangs in the wreath room. Your wedding photo hangs in that tiny wreath room where we check out at, Ginny? That is absolutely awesome. I was in that wreath room yesterday, paying $57 for our Christmas tree. And she said, almost the whole time they've been open, she's been going to Foxfire. Hannah, welcome to the broadcast. Thank you kindly for joining us. We'll also highlight on the show, Thomas, we'll get to your comments in a matter of moments. I will say this, this is the third time, I think, we've cut our Christmas tree at Foxfire Christmas Tree Farm. The Christmas Tree Farm business is a challenging business. Foxfire Christmas Tree Farm is phenomenal. I don't want anyone to think I'm throwing any shade on Foxfire, Judah. Okay? It is palatial. It is a huge farm in Buckingham County. The people that run and own the farm are fantastic. The people that help you after you cut your Christmas, they provide saws. They provide the wagons for you to drag the tree from the farm. They take the Christmas tree, Judah, from the wagon that you're dragging across their farm to the checkout hut, the checkout little house, and they put the Christmas tree through this contraption or this machine to net it. Then the burly farmer guys, the burly Buckingham County or Almaro County farmers, take the Christmas tree and even load it and tie it onto your automobile. We have a Ford Explorer. We didn't even have to put it up there. The whole experience was fantastic. I do want to highlight this. The Christmas Tree Farm business is a difficult one to scale or sustain, because as farms get popular and get larger and more demand, the trees get cut down, and they take forever to, they take a while to grow back.
Yeah, you've got to have a cycling, you know, cycling set of fields where you can have one field growing trees for next year, while this field is currently getting cut down, and another field that's, you know, that's just barely starting.
There was a limit of, there was few trees, we are fortunate, and our main room has extremely high ceilings. I mean, we could easily fit a 20-foot Christmas tree in there. No one wants to cut down a Clark Griswold Christmas tree and put it on the family Explorer, the family station wagon, and lug it like Clark did to his house in Chicago, and have it burst all the windows, have squirrels and raccoons in the farm and the tree, and have sap stuck in his hands as he's flipping through the magazine while sitting in the bed, or he gives a kiss to his wife, good night, and the sap is pulling her hair while he's going to sleep. No one wants that. So we went with a very modest nine-foot, nine-and-a-half-foot tree. Okay? There were limited trees under, limited trees eight-footed over at Foxfire. How long do you think a Christmas tree takes to grow? There were a boatload of trees, many, 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 many trees, like four and a half feet and under. I could count on my hands, my wife's hands, and our son's hands, the amount of trees that were eight-footed under, and of those trees that were eight-footed under, none of them were full in capacity. Just highlighting that out there. It was still a fantastic experience. It's about the memories, and it's about the stories you tell. I want to talk about the bookstore. Why don't you give them the headline for the second topic we're going to discuss here?
The Deadless Bookstore has sold for $975,000.
That's a lot of money.
Via seller financing. It's a bigger, I think it's a bigger space than most people realize.
975,000, oh, it's massive. Have you been in there? It's massive. It's a labyrinth. 975,000 Sandy McAdams sold the bookstore to Jackson Landers. Owner-financing deal. A lot of businesses, we broker a lot of business deals, a lot of businesses are brokered in seller-financed capacity. I want to ask you this very straightforward question, and I'll start with you, Judah, then I'll ask you, the viewers and listeners. A $975,000 bookstore purchase, would you have done that deal?
Would I have done that deal?
And a follow-up question for you.
From which end?
Touche. You would have done it from the Sandy McAdams end, the owner of the bookstore who's had it for decades, fighting multiple sclerosis and in tough health right now. Sandy McAdams, the founder of the CNO Restaurant. In fact, he met his wife at the CNO Restaurant when he opened CNO. Sandy McAdams had this massive bookstore book collection, and was previously of West Hampton, New York, the Hamptons. And he said, I'm going to come to Charlottesville from West Hampton, New York, because I like the vibe and the energy of Charlottesville, Virginia. And when he opened the CNO in downtown Charlottesville and this bookstore, downtown Charlottesville was a fraction of his former self. Many folks attribute Charlottesville fine dining to the CNO being first to market and getting New York Times publicity for the CNO, as why the culinary scene in Charlottesville skyrocketed and took off and is what it is today. So I got a follow-up direct question to you. You're the buyer. I'll be specific. Would you buy a bookstore? It's got reputation, it's got pedigree, it's got tens of thousands of books. I'll be conservative. It's got thousands of books. I would not be surprised if there's over 10,000 books in there.
I've never counted.
$975,000. And what's the future of local bookstores? And is the future of local bookstores brick and mortar? Let's talk about all these, and also talk about the importance of keeping icons like this bookstore alive for Charlottesville from a charm and character standpoint. Anywhere you want to go, JDubs.
If I had the money, I think I'd buy it. I love books. I think it's a great, I think it's a great store. I think that...
And you're a book lover.
And I think there are a lot of book lovers out there who are going to keep businesses like this going.
Patronizing.
I used to love, I used to love, what was it called? There was an offshoot of eBay.
I love how Judah goes to the internet sales of books and championing his argument for brick and mortar local bookstores. Go ahead.
It sold books.
On the internet?
Yeah.
This is the Direct Com editor of the local brick and mortar bookstore, but go ahead.
I used it when I couldn't find books at any of the local bookstores. I would go looking for a particular book or books at every single used bookstore I could find. I love used bookstores. I love walking around them. I love, you know, checking out the titles that I'll never buy, but have, you know, cool covers or just, you know, interesting stories. And I think there are a lot of people like me who really just, you know, love the business model. They love the brick and mortar. They love walking around smelling, holding, reading the book covers, and I don't think that's ever going to change. Now, the reason I mentioned...
Even with, we're relatively the same age. We're relatively the same age. I echo everything you said. And I'll take it a slightly different direction. I'm a newspaper guy. I cut my chops out of UVA and the newspaper business. There is nothing I, okay, I'm going to be words matter. There are a few things I like more than getting a newspaper in the morning with coffee and holding the paper in my hands, and getting the print on my fingertips, and flipping through the paper over breakfast, or sitting on a chair with some quiet, we rarely get to quiet with two boys anymore, but reading a newspaper. I love it. There's something romantic about it. There's something charming about it. There's something yesteryear about it that I absolutely love. As you and I get older and head into the twilight, we will be replaced by younger versions of ourselves who never had the experiences of holding and flipping pages in our hands. So that commitment to holding and flipping pages, that zest for holding and flipping pages will not be there.
It may eventually die. It'll be a sad day. I, you know, I...
Go ahead.
It's impossible to, it's impossible to predict the future. You're right, there are, you know, the kids today, I don't know if you get the Sunday newspaper. I don't know if your kids get to read the, get to read the Sunday funnies.
Sunday funnies? My kids do not, my oldest, our youngest is one, just turned one. Our oldest is five and a half, and our oldest is absolutely addicted to you know what? You know what he's addicted to?
YouTube. YouTube?
He's addicted to freaking screen time. Is one of the most demoralizing things I see as a parent.
Yeah.
Is his affinity or addiction with the iPad and just seeing this black hole of YouTube and streaming content.
Yep. My, uh, my niece, two and a half years old, she'll grab your phone and once it's in her hands, she does not want to give it back. Uh, have you ever heard, have you ever heard of something called Coco? Uh, it's some YouTube channel, I think.
Oh yeah, is it, uh, oh my gosh. My wife refuses to allow him, what is it?
Cocohmelon?
I think that's what she refuses.
Cocohmelon.
To allow him to watch. Are you watching, is my, my better half watching?
My, my sister, well, my, my niece was on, I think, my mom's phone and in like 30 seconds on the phone, she found something, she found Cocohmelon somewhere. And my sister's like, no, grabbed it from her, said, I don't know how she did, she did that. She found that like in no time at all, but she is not allowed to, to view that. Because apparently it's just like, it's just like crack cocaine for kids.
Yeah. No, one of them, and it might be that, uh, I'm going to text you right now. One of them has content in there where they talk about harming the parents.
Really?
Yeah.
Kill your parents.
What's the show? I'm texting her. You refuse to let our son watch. My, I guess the point we're making is as that generation becomes the buying population, how can this type of business model survive? Deep Throat asked the ownership history of the building. Sandy and, and, and Donna McAdams owned the building. It was assessed, um, in 2023 for $741,600. That's a low assessment. It's a low assessment. There's been no trade or no ownership change in the building, which is a reflection that Mr. Landers, Jackson Landers is buying the business and not the real estate for 975. Um, my wife texting me back, she says it's on YouTube. Huggy, Wuggy and Kissy, Missy? Have you seen Huggy, Wuggy and Kissy, Missy? Any of the viewers and listeners? Have children whose kids watch Huggy, Wuggy, Kissy, Missy? Huggy, Wuggy, Kissy, Missy? She randomly saw him watching Huggy, Wuggy, Kissy, Missy and it had commentary and content over there of the children hurting the parents.
That's crazy. But honest question here, are we, we're doing this to ourselves, right?
Oh, I, I, I want to hear where you go with this.
I mean, they watch, our, our kids watch.
Oh yeah, they're watching us.
Watch us with, uh, with the iPhones, with the iPads, um, or, you know, the, the equivalent in, uh, in other versions. And, and then we, we give them these things.
Well, can we take it a step farther? Is there irony here in that Judah Wickauer and I in part pay our bills and earn our paycheck by streaming and hosting an internet talk show on social media where we hold and captivate attention for hours and hours every week and we're throwing shade on streaming and content on the internet and on social platforms?
I'm not throwing shade.
You're throwing a little shade. I'm throwing shade.
I'm throwing shade on, on people who, people who are obviously, I mean, parents are obviously the prime, uh, the prime, uh, uh, role models of their kids. Until they, until they get out and start, uh, hanging out with other kids for a few years at least, you are your child's role model. And if their role model is always on the phone, always on an iPad, then I don't see why they wouldn't, but how is that, uh, how is it, uh, strange, surprising thing that they want to be on a phone and an iPad like their parents? And then when, once they start getting into the content created specifically for them, stuff like Huggy, Wuggy, whatever, and Coco.
I just spit.
Cocohmelon. Uh, I mean, this stuff is, it's made to appeal to them, just like, just like the, the cartoons in the, in the Sunday paper were written to appeal to kids of a different era.
This is today's version of Dennis the Menace. This is today's version of Snoopy.
Yeah.
Far Side. What was your favorite comic? I love Dennis the Menace, the comic strip.
I was never a fan of Dennis the Menace.
Why?
I did like Far Side.
I loved Far Side. Far Side was often very highbrow though.
Yeah.
Dennis the Menace, maybe it's a, a show of my, uh.
What else did I like? Uh?
Rob Neil, this is hilarious.
I mean, it also depends where you live because there were things that I saw in Sunday papers in California that I didn't see.
Of course.
Sunday papers in Maine.
Not tied to where you live. It's tied to the owners of the newspaper and their distribution and the deals that they had with the comic strips.
Yeah.
Uh, for Distro. Rob Neil makes a Christmas Vacation reference. Little fool, lots of sap in regards to Clark Griswold's Christmas, uh, tree. Ginny Who highlights this on Twitter. She says, it takes a minimum of six years to hit the six foot, six to eight foot range for Christmas trees. And she says, yes, Needlecast hit many East Coast tree farms hard a, a few years ago. That in addition to many of the next generation farmers not wanting to run farms has led to fewer farms and a higher demand for those still open. We always go on Black Friday to get a tall enough one. They go very, very fast at Foxfire, she highlights. A lot of folks, I mean, the whole mindset of the consumer has changed. You talk about internet potentially cannibalizing book sales. I mean, obviously that's been going on for a very, very long time and not recently. A lot of folks buying their Christmas tree at Lowe's. I've seen a lot of people spending less than 60 bucks for a full eight-foot Christmas tree at Lowe's, which is kind of demoralizing. Bill McChesney, we'll get to your comments in a matter of moments here. We have.
And don't forget the fake Christmas trees.
Ah, that just doesn't do it for me.
I think my parents might have a fake one now.
A fake Christmas tree?
Because we haven't always had a chance to, you know, what if you, what if you miss?
But it loses that Christmas tree smell.
That's why they make, that's why they make spray.
Are your parents spraying the tree?
Uh, I don't know that they actually do that.
Holly Phosphor Henrico says, I still love to hold my morning paper while having my coffee. Reading online is just not the same. I see the print paper coming to an end soon. Absolutely. I've said this many times on the broadcast. I think the future of newspapers, at least in the Commonwealth of Virginia, is one print paper called the Richmond Times-Dispatch. Lee Enterprises owns most of the papers in Virginia and then they're going to convert their Charlottesville, their Roanoke, their Green County, their Waynesboro papers into bureaus. They'll have one or two, a staff writer, maybe two staff writers and a photographer making up the Charlottesville Bureau. And Charlottesville Bureau will just submit news to the Richmond Times-Dispatch and that will be the newspaper of record for all of the Commonwealth of Virginia. That's what I think is going to happen. It's going to create a tremendous amount of job loss. A tremendous amount of, who's that man walking by?
Looks like it might be the mayor.
It's the mayor. A tremendous amounts of, uh, institutional memory loss, but that is what's going to happen with newspapers in the Commonwealth. Mark it down. Uh, in regards to the bookstore, 975,000 owner finance deal, I want to highlight it like this. Jackson Landers, I salute you for carrying on this tradition.
Yeah.
This is a Charlottesville icon. I've been in this market. I've lived in Charlottesville and the Charlottesville area for going on 24 years and that bookstore has always been there. It is a phenomenal experience shopping at this bookstore. Props to you, Jackson Landers. How would you evolve the business if you were the second generation owner with $975,000 worth of debt currently being financed? By the owner.
I think one of the big things that I would do, and I think it's something that all used bookstores should do is have like a, uh, a visitor log uh, that includes, uh, a section where people can write down what books they're looking for. Uh, along with their, uh, along with their contact information so that, uh, the, the bookstore owners can keep their eyes out for certain books or even maybe even, uh, be active in going out and seeking out the books that their, uh, that their visitors are looking for. Because I can't tell you how often I go around looking for a book and I don't see it anywhere. And the problem is, I can, I know I can find it online.
Yeah, that's the problem. If you don't find it in the store, do you go back again looking for the book or do you just buy it online?
Um, I mean, it depends on if I'm, if I'm reading a series and I really want to, uh, continue the series, I'll either buy it online or I'll find a way to download it and, and put it on an iPad. Uh, if I, if I'm really want to read the book, sometimes I'll still seek out books that I've read just because, you know, I might have the first four in a series and I want to get the last two.
How many books do you read, uh, a month?
It changes. There's no, uh, I wouldn't say there's, there's any particular.
Roundabout. Rough estimate.
It, it's really impossible to say. I'd say two, maybe. That's.
I'd say that's a pretty, if you're reading 24 books a, a year, that's a pretty, uh, prolific reader.
But it changes. Uh, sometimes I'm like.
How many books do you read on a tab, a tablet of some kind?
Again, it's, it all depends on what I can find.
For the sake of conversation.
I, I, there's no, I don't.
Just give a rough.
Per year? You want how many books I read on tablet?
Comparing and contrasting the, the reading of books as actual books versus reading of books on a tablet of some kind.
I mean, I'd say eight.
So eight on a tablet versus 24 with hard copiers, uh, a hardback or softback book. So you're three, you're three X-ing.
There's, I mean, it's, there's no real way for me to, for me to judge any of those numbers.
This is the sake of a talk show.
I know, but I, it's not like I, it's not like I.
It's, no one's going to hold you to this. If, if your numbers are skewed, it's okay.
Okay.
So you think roughly three times?
Sure.
Okay.
It all depends on, like I said, what I can find. I was reading a series of books that's, uh, really long and I think I had the first eight or nine books and wasn't finding any of them anywhere and just downloaded the rest of them for the iPad. Read the, read the last four or five books on that. I will always pick an actual book over iPad.
Yeah, same.
But like I said, if, uh, if I'm in the middle of a series and.
Can't find it, you go for convenience.
Yeah.
Totally understandable. So your suggestion to evolving the bookstore concept would be having a log. That's a good idea.
Because obviously the books can be found online and the margin might be smaller for a, well, they might have, they might have places where they can find the books, uh, and get a, a good deal and make it worthwhile. But I think even with, uh, I think even with the smaller margin, you're keeping your, you're keeping your clientele sticky. Especially if you're going out of your way to, hey, I saw in the, in our logbook that you're looking for, you know, X book. Uh, we just got a copy in. I wanted to give you a chance to come in and buy it if you're still looking for it. And I bet, I'd bet you nine times out of 10, that person will be in the store that day or the next day to pick up the book and they will be ecstatic and thankful and I mean, there's, that's, that's, uh, brand loyalty right there.
Uh, John Blair watching the program. He says, are the Washington, are the, uh, Wall Street Journal and the New York Times actually delivered in Charlottesville any longer? He says, we have a weekend Wall Street Journal subscription and our paper is never delivered. He lives on the south side of town, John does. Uh, and he says, I go and get it at Wegmans, the Wall Street Journal, and I take a credit from the newspaper. I'm responding to him while hosting the talk show. I only see those two newspapers at the coffee shops and never on the news, do you, on the newsstands. Do you see the Journal or the Times anywhere around town, Judah?
Uh, I think I usually see them in gas stations and, uh, and grocery stores.
Uh, he says, I ask this because Barnes and Noble refuse to reserve Wall Street Journals or New York Times unless you call the day of. A used bookstore could be a delivery point for both and reserve your copy of both in advance. That's a damn good idea.
Yeah.
John, that's an excellent idea. That's an, did you hear what he said?
Yeah.
That's a great idea. Uh, a great, Jackson Landers, we're, we're talking about your, uh, newly acquired business because we love it. You're, he, how far away is that bookstore from where we're doing this show right now?
I mean, we could toss rocks through the windows if, uh.
I could, we could hit it with a rock.
Yeah.
Throwing a rock. I can walk there in 20 seconds.
Yeah.
From where we're at. I love, I, I see this place every day. Basically, you do too.
Yeah.
Okay, I want to see this last for another 50 years. I want Jackson to sell it to somebody else.
The book I'm reading right now, I, I found there.
There you go.
In fact, I was looking around, I was looking around for the book all over the place and I happened to walk in there because I, it's not always, well, it's not always open when I'm, uh, when I'm getting out, it's definitely not usually open when I'm getting out of work. So, uh, I think I came by on a Saturday and I'm just walking around and walking around and all of a sudden like right at head height is the book that I would been looking for for like a month.
That's awesome. That's serendipitous. Uh, Dr. John Chab, throwing a little shade at you over there, poking, poking the bear a little bit. Uh, he's a dentist. He said, oh my God, getting an answer is like pulling teeth. He's the dentist right there. Uh, and I respond to him. I, I deal with this every day. I deal with this every day. But that's what makes a good talk show. It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter if your number's a hundred percent accurate.
That don't really have an answer. Like I've been reading.
Looking roundabout.
I've been reading the book for the last month.
We're just looking for a roundabout number. To put in perspective, how many hard copies or softbacks or paperback books that you read versus reading on a tablet? Just for the sake of a talk show. No one's going to, no one's going to hold you to it and crucify to it if those numbers are slightly off. The New York Times, Wall Street Journal delivery pickup is a brilliant idea. Where if you could sell a hundred New York Times or a hundred Wall Street Journals, uh, you know, a weekend or heck, I bet you there's a, for me, it would be the Wall Street Journal. I hate to say this, viewers and listeners who are watching this program, I do not mean to offend you, but I'm going to say this anyway. I think the New York Times has turned into a caricature of its former self and is pretty much in the same category for me as the lining of a guinea pig cage. The New York Times is skewed. It's lacking editorial centeredness. It's undoubtedly, undoubtedly left-leaning and that's an understatement. It's way left-leaning. It is not the paper it used to be and to call it the world's newspaper is an insult to the Wall Street Journal. I think the Wall Street Journal, maybe you make an argument for the, the Financial Times are the world's newspaper. I would say the Wall Street Journal is the paper of merit and the paper of record for the United States of America right now. They still, the Wall Street Journal, commit themselves to being centered in their reporting. And the Times is not doing that anymore and I don't even put any thought into the New York Times anymore.
Yeah.
Some folks may disagree and if you disagree, that's just my opinion. Don't crucify me for it. It's just my opinion right there. I understand however, in a market like Charlottesville, in a market like Almaro County where there's a passion and a commitment to the New York Times. And if you can somehow become a point of sale for the Times, then you will have walk-in traffic. And walk-in traffic is what any used bookstore needs.
Yep.
I want to shift this topic to this question. How important is it for the charm of places like downtown Charlottesville? The character, the charm, the je ne sais quoi, the attractiveness for maintaining businesses like this one?
I'd say it's fairly important. I mean, they.
Is it important?
Yeah.
Or some people are of the mindset, when one closes, like my wife, for example. My wife, for example, she spent almost a decade in Manhattan. Much of that time on the Upper East Side. She worked in finance for Blackstone and she would often say, while living in New York, when a business went out, she got sad for the business but got excited because a new business would be opening. And she got, she got, uh, excited with what was to come. And she characterizes it or depicts it almost as this Darwinistic evolution for businesses. One closes, one replaces it, and that gives the opportunity for the community to rally around the new one, creating a new level of zest or an excitement that may not have been there for a business that had been there for a long period of time. Do you buy that mindset?
In some ways, I think it depends on the business. Uh, some businesses have less of a, I think, a, a following and, uh, you know, a new business coming in could definitely, I can see, cause that like new excitement. People coming to check it out, people coming, you know, uh, coming to the area more than they would have in the past. Um, I don't know if that's necessarily true with, uh, used bookstores in all cases. Uh, it was certainly, I think, uh, lucky that. that the, what was it, Play It Again Sam bookstore on the downtown mall got another bookstore in its place after it closed. I don't know if that's, I don't know if that would necessarily happen to another place. And I'm sure there's, I'm sure there's a chance it could have been bought by someone else and turned into something else. And I think that would have been a, I think that would have been a shame for the downtown mall. As I love Deadless, I also love the new Second Act bookstore. And I even check out Blue Whale books occasionally.
That's expensive. Aren't those, aren't those, and you know more about this topic than I do, so I'm gonna listen to learn. Isn't that in the niche or the category of almost like collectible antique type titles that are super expensive?
I think they do have those. I think they also have regular, you know, regular books, just on a smaller scale.
Does it surprise you that in, how, how big is the downtown mall? Eight blocks? Right?
Something like that.
Seven, eight blocks? In a seven, eight block radius, how many book, you know, this is right up your alley here. Seven to eight block radius, how many used bookstores are there?
Uh, I believe it's just those three.
You got, rattle them off again. Old Dominion is, is another one. You didn't, you didn't reference that one.
Uh, I don't know if they have used books there.
What? They gotta have used books there. Rattle off the ones and I'll, I'll look this one up.
It's Deadless.
New Dominion, not Old Dominion, New Dominion Bookshop, New Dominion.
I still don't think they sell used books.
Really? Okay, then let me rephrase this for you. Let me rephrase this for you. We're doing this on the fly. Are you surprised that there, is there four? You got New Dominion, Deadless.
New Dominion, Deadless, Second Act Books and.
Blue.
And Blue Whale.
That's four.
Yeah.
Four in seven blocks. Does that speak to the sophistication of the marketplace? Or does that speak to the fact that the bookstores need foot traffic and this place has the most foot traffic?
I think it's probably more the latter than the former.
The sophistication of the marketplace. Edge, College Ed Chiquita Town.
No, I mean, I think it's more that.
Foot traffic?
The foot traffic. This is a good area for, for bookstores than it is, than it says about the sophistication of the, of the crowd, but there's certainly some of that as well. And different bookstores fill different niches. Like Blue, uh, Blue Whale, like you said, has a lot more, a lot more.
Premium, collectible, pricey.
Yeah.
Rare.
Rare books.
Rare.
Um, I would say that Deadless probably has the largest selection.
This is what I would do. If I was, uh, the new proprietor of Deadless and I had a $975,000 note, debt service. I would do exactly what you said, the log is a great idea. I'd do the New York Times, Wall Street Journal pickup like John Blair said. John, that's a brilliant idea. I hadn't even thought about that, John Blair. That is a great idea. I would do that. And heck, I would probably be there a few times a month for the Journal. I would do, I would up the social media game. And I know it's almost counterintuitive upping the social media game for something that sells print titles, but let's cut to the chase. We're constantly on our phones and living within social media. I would up the live, um, book reading. New Dominion does a really good job of this. Hosting authors to read their own books, uh, and inviting people to.
It's because it's all new books, though.
And it's also because they have the space. Deadless does not have much space to hold large gatherings.
No.
Or even small gatherings.
Yeah.
I would create a potential scavenger hunt concept where, where you utilize the labyrinth nature, the maze nature of the, of the real estate and how the titles are laid out in a way to drive customer engagement, engagement through a scavenger hut of some kind.
That could be great for kids.
Where clues are positioned strategically throughout the bookstore and they have to find a, follow a trail of clues to get a pot or prize of some kind.
Yeah.
I think that would be super cool.
I think that would be, I think that would be wonderful for kids. I think, uh, Second Act Books has the best, is the best place for kids on the downtown mall in terms of bookstores. Cause they've got, they've got jigsaw puzzles, they've got, you know, those little wooden train sets.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
They've got all kinds of stuff for kids to play with while, while their parents are browsing the books.
And, and I would also do the, I would also put something into the, may not want to hear this, but the e-commerce position of potentially selling and buying online and then shipping and mailing.
I'd be surprised if any of these bookstores weren't already doing that.
I mean, I'm on the website.
They may not, uh.
I don't even, I, I'm not trying, I don't think it has a website.
Well, they may not, uh.
They don't have, I, I'm looking, I'm gonna go to the Facebook page here. You would think that would be linked from the Facebook page, right? I'm on the about page of the Facebook page. There's not a, there's not a website.
Yeah, I didn't mean that they're, I didn't mean that they're selling online. I meant that they're, I'm sure they're probably.
Do you know when the last post was on this Facebook page?
Uh, you're talking about Deadless?
Yeah. November 9th, 2021. So it's been over two years since their last Facebook post.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a, I mean, you have, you have a boatload of money to pay off. You gotta start thinking, thinking ways to drive immediate sales.
Yeah.
Um, all right, a couple more topics before we close the program for you, Judah. You brought this topic to me, the DMV.
Yeah.
You set the stage. I'll respond and react to you.
Uh, there was an article recently talking about how the DMV could be sharing your information. Uh, there is, um, uh, the way I remember it, they were, it was talking about the fact that there are certain, like, levels of, so if X agency asks the DMV for information, they're allowed to get this much of it. Uh, some other places may, may have, um, I don't know if the right word is permission, but they are allowed to request information from the DMV and there is a certain amount of your information that the DMV is allowed to give out. Uh, and who's to say they're not, I mean, pretty much everybody's selling your information now, whether it's.
We're, we're not doing that.
Well, I don't mean everybody, like, everybody that you pass on the, on the road. I mean, businesses. Amazon, uh, you know, anything that you sign up for, uh, you can almost guarantee that they're probably selling your, selling your information. And what it comes down to or what, uh, one of the big, one of the big discussions in the article is how I'm sure everybody out there is looking at the insane amount of spam in their.
Mailbox.
Mailboxes.
It's overwhelming.
And.
It's almost turned into a useless portal.
And there's also the spam on your phone, in your email inbox, and all of your information is being sold and we're just getting bombarded with, uh, I think we're lucky when it's just trash. Unfortunately, a lot of it is, uh, is seriously bad stuff. I mean.
Phishing schemes.
Yeah.
Privacy, identity, catfishing.
Or straight up.
Threats.
Taking control of your computer, taking control.
Tell them the story, what happened to you? And this is a computer sophisticated, technology sophisticated, you don't have to, if you don't want to, do you?
No, no, I don't mind.
This is a technology sophisticated human being, Judah Wickhauer.
And then I almost got hit again with another one. So the first one was, uh, it was a, it was while I was busy with something, didn't really have the, um, didn't really have the, the wattage, what's the word? Uh, anyways, um, I see this email. It's from Norton Antivirus.
Bandwidth.
I had, I had Norton Antivirus not too long ago and got rid of it to, uh, to go with another service. And here's this email from Norton saying, hey, we're renewing your account. It's gonna be $900. Um, and so I immediately just clicked the link on the email, got into this discussion with something, some guy, and it was insane. Basically, they have you fill out something and, okay, you know, we just gotta fill this out to get you a, you know, get your money back. You fill it out and they trick you by, so you, you put in the amount that you're supposed to be getting back, like, say it's $900, and when you hit the submit button, it makes it look like you put in $9,000. And the guy on the other end is like, oh, well, I'm gonna lose my job. We gotta, you know, we gotta, like, fix this. And all of a sudden, they're asking you to, like, send, send money and get, uh, Apple gift cards. And it's, it's.
You got the money in the bottom of the ninth inning. You barely got your money back.
I sent the money and then I got home and I'm like, what am I thinking? I'm an idiot. It, like, dawned on me. Cause I'd been, you know, I'd just been, like, uh, going crazy the whole day, like, running around and finally had the time to, like, stop and think this through. And I was like, crap. And I called, uh, I called, um.
Your bank?
No, I called, uh, Western Union.
Okay.
And said, hey, I need to reverse this. And as soon as they reversed it, I start getting nasty text messages from, uh, from the guy that I'd been on the phone with. And.
What kind, what was he saying?
It's like, uh, it doesn't matter. We've got, we've got your information, we've blah, blah, blah. We're gonna, we're not just gonna take 9,000, we're gonna take 90,000. We're gonna drop all your information on the, on the dark net. Um, like, just nasty stuff. I didn't even bother, uh.
Responding.
Responding. And had to shut off my computer.
Jeez.
Unplug it from, uh, make sure it wasn't, uh, wasn't connected to wifi, to the internet. And this is something that probably 95% of people wouldn't be able to figure out on their own. But with my phone, I looked up some information, found where the, basically, when they got onto my computer, they had access to everything. So I had to then go and find where their little, like, bug, so to speak, was hidden in my computer, um, and delete the code.
Hmm.
And then, of course, go through everything, change all my passwords.
Hang your ass. This happened to him at work. You changed the lower third.
Go to the bank.
On screen. This happened to him at work.
I think I did change the lower third. And then, um, and then not, not much, not much time had passed before I'm looking at, I'm looking through my, uh, through my emails on my phone and I get something from the post office. And it says, hey, we couldn't deliver a package, uh, blah, blah, blah. Um, we, we can re-deliver it, but we need, like, a 38 cent fee. And so I followed this link and I'm putting in all my information. It's like, it's early in the morning. I'm not thinking straight, you know? I'm just like, oh, well, uh, and, and of course, if you're expecting a package.
Of course, you wanna do it.
It makes sense. And, and then I stopped, like, right before I'd gotten all my information in and hit send. And I'm checking out the, the URL and I'm like, well, that doesn't, why would, why would the post office send me to a URL that's not like US post office? Uh, United States Postal Service. And I Googled.
And you saw it was a scam. Long story short, you saw it was a scam.
And stopped myself. I deleted everything on there. I, I'm like, I hope they don't have, like, a key logger. Because a keylogger can see all the information that you typed in.
Here's the, uh, essence of what we're talking about here. If the DMV, the Department of Motor Vehicles, is selling and/or exposing your privacy and your data, how are you really safe in this world?
Yeah.
Here's the thing. When you're on social media and you fill out your Facebook or your Instagram and they ask for your name and your birthday, you've already shared so much valuable information with just your name and your birthday that exposes you to folks with nefarious intentions. Then they can link you back to your kids and your family with who you follow. They can track what you're liking and what you're sharing.
Yeah. Google, Facebook, Instagram, they know the kind of things that you like. They know.
That's why when you see on social media, you see on social media or you see on, uh, on the internet, you're like, how do they know I want this product?
Yeah. How did they know I was talking to someone about this exact thing, like.
Right.
A day and a half ago.
How do they know? Are they tracking what I'm saying on the phone? I was talking on the phone about this. No. It's the data that you're sharing with your keystrokes, your clicks and your web traffic online. I guess it's a word of caution. If the Department of Motor Vehicles is sharing and trading and exposing your data, then nothing is safe.
Yeah.
It's a word of caution. Two other topics and then we'll get out of here. The listening session at Charlottesville High School proved to be yet another dud. I would think at this point with Charlottesville High School, when it comes to safety of kids, this is what parents want. This is how we're keeping your kids safe. These are the methods that we're using to keep your kids safe. No one wants, uh, I won't say no one, a lot of people don't want metal detectors. I think at this point, metal detectors may be well received. School resource officers and better technology or safety for secondary entryways around the high school. That's what I would do. I would say metal detectors, school resource officer and these additional entrances and exits to the school, we're gonna monitor through cameras, through alarms, high piercing noises and other technology to keep the kids safe. That's the point we're at with Charlottesville High School. That's the point. Not spending too much time here. About 15 or 20 seconds, your thoughts on that?
Uh, I think it's not really a surprise that, uh, that people had some problems with, I mean, it's called a listening session. Um, I think.
Listening sessions are bogus at this point.
I think the problem here is that parents want to hear what's actually being done.
They want tangible results.
Yeah.
Tangible action.
Because oftentimes, parents don't know all of what's going on in the school and so.
And a lot of times, parents don't want to know everything that's happening.
Their input may be helpful, but ultimately, it's the people that run the school that should, should, should have the best idea of how to keep.
Tangible results.
And do the right thing.
Tangible action plan.
And if, and if all they're doing is saying, hey, we want to hear what you have to say. Okay.
We're gonna keep the primary entrance safe in this way. These are the ways we're gonna keep the primary entrance and better protection than it was before. These are the ways we're gonna keep this, the secondary entrances and exits safer than what was before.
Yeah.
These are the personnel that we're gonna have out there to make sure the kids are safe, not roving the hallways looking for fights. Succinct, clear-cut plan. That's where we're at. And the last topic of the talk show, Virginia basketball returns to action tomorrow. I'm gonna ask this question on the Jerry and Jerry Show tomorrow. I host a talk show on Tuesdays at 10:15 AM with Jerry Radcliffe. It's called the Jerry and Jerry Show. Is Virginia men's basketball a top 25 team right now? They are in the receiving votes portion of both polls. One of those polls, there are a couple of spots outside the top 25 would suggest they're, which would suggest they're a top 30 team in the eyes of the coaches and the voters. I think this Virginia men's basketball team has got a phenomenal upside. They shellacked Syracuse, an offensive output that I have not seen from Tony Bennett's team in a very long time. I think you're looking at a top 25 team right now. That topic on the Jerry and Jerry Show tomorrow at 10:15 AM. For Judah Wickhauer, I'm Jerry Miller. This is the I Love Seaview Show.